Recording in progress.
The time is 6:45 PM. This is the special closed session of the City of Emeryville. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville, California. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
Next is Ex parte communications. Members, please take a look at the agenda. Do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none. We're moving to public comment. So, public comment is in person. If any members of the public would like to speak, please come to the podium and you have two minutes. And this is for closed session items. Okay, there's no public comment. Item five is closed session. We'll be taking items five through nine in closed session and we'll report out afterwards.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
The special closed session meeting of the City of Emeryville is being recessed until a later time. The time is 7:16. This is the City of Emeryville Successor Agency to Emeryville Redevelopment Agency regular meeting. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville, California. Madam Clerk, please take call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
We have the final agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
We have no action items. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:19. The time is 7:19. This is the regular meeting of the City of Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville, California. Madam Clerk, please take call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
We have no action items. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:19. The time is 7:19. This is the regular meeting of the City of Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville, California. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still here. I will proceed to approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
The final agenda is approved. Item four is Special Orders of the Day.
Quite a matter, requires a motion and a vote.
Ah, yes. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
Item four is Special Orders of the Day. We have three proclamations. The first of which is a proclamation of the City of Emeryville, the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming April 19th, 2024 as Education and Sharing Day. Whereas the basis for the continuity of any society is education, and in the City of Emeryville, education of our youth is a priority which is supported by the longstanding Emeryville Child Development Center. And whereas, in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole. And whereas, the Reb Rabbi Menachem M. Schnirson stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas, such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness, imbued with the awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher in an era of global peace. And whereas, the United States Congress first established National Education and Sharing Day in honor of Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnirson on April 18th, 1978, as an annual national day in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world. A day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the good foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that Friday, April 19th, 2024 be proclaimed Education and Sharing Day in Emeryville. And I call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future for all, as proclaimed by Vice Mayor of the City Council of Emeryville at the regular meeting held Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. And do we have somebody to receive the proclamation? Yes. Rabbi, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Welch is not with us, but thank you Vice Mayor David Mora, and all the council members for this tremendous honor with this proclamation that the City of Emeryville joins the President, Governors, and dozens of states and hundreds of other cities in designating the Rebbe's birthday, which is always four days before the holiday of Passover, as Education and Sharing Day in tribute to the Rebbe's outstanding dedication to education. The Rebbe taught that education in general should not be limited to acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career. Instead, the educational system must pay more attention, indeed the main attention, to the building of character with emphasis on moral and ethical studies. And the Rebbe emphasized that every individual, in fact, every individual action has an impact on the entire universe and instill the hope for a brighter future into the lives of countless people across the globe. Since 1978, the U.S. Congress has designated Education and Sharing Day on the Rebbe's birthday as a time to pause and recognize our responsibility to ensure that our young people have the foundations necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment. Education and Sharing Day is about creating conversations. It's about the conversations we have with our children around the dinner table, the conversations we have with our students in the classrooms, and the conversations that we have day in and day out that have an impact on
Recording in progress.
The special closed session meeting of the City of Emeryville is being recessed until a later time. The time is 7:16. This is the, this is the City of Emeryville Successor Agency to Emeryville Redevelopment Agency regular meeting. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville, California. Madam Clerk, please take, call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
We have the final agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
Next, we have ex parte communications. Members, if you have any ex parte communications, please speak up. Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. If there is any member of the public who has a public comment, you have two minutes and you can come speak at the podium. And just a reminder that this is not the, the regular meeting. This is of the redevelopment agency. Seeing no public comment, the next item is the consent calendar. Do any members wish to remove any item for discussion on the consent calendar? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Mayor Welch is absent.
We have no action items. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:19. The time is 7:19. This is the regular meeting of the City of Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville, California. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still here. I will proceed to approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
The final agenda is approved. Item four is special orders of the day.
Requires a motion and a vote.
Ah, yes. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
Item four is special orders of the day. We have three proclamations. The first of which is a proclamation of the City of Emeryville, the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming April 19th, 2024 as Education and Sharing Day. Whereas the basis for the continuity of any society is education, and in the City of Emeryville, education of our youth is a priority which is supported by the longstanding Emeryville Child Development Center. And whereas, in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole. And whereas, the Reb Rabbi Menachem M. Schnirson stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas, such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness, imbued with the awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher in an era of global peace. And whereas, the United States Congress first established National Education and Sharing Day in honor of Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnirson on April 18th, 1978, as an annual national day in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world. A day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the good foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that Friday, April 19th, 2024 be proclaimed Education and Sharing Day in Emeryville. And I call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future for all, as proclaimed by Vice Mayor of the City Council of Emeryville at the regular meeting held Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. And do we have somebody to receive the proclamation? Yes. Rabbi, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Welch is not with us, but thank you Vice Mayor David Mora and all the council members for this tremendous honor with this proclamation that, that the City of Emeryville joins the president, governors, and dozens of states and hundreds of other cities in designating the Rebbe's birthday, which is always four days before the holiday of Passover, as Education and Sharing Day in tribute to the Rebbe's outstanding dedication to education. The Rebbe taught that education in general should not be limited to acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career. Instead, the educational system must pay more attention, indeed the main attention, to the building of character with emphasis on moral and ethical studies. And Rebbe emphasized that every individual, in fact, every individual action has an impact on the entire universe and instill the hope for a brighter future into the lives of countless people across the globe. Since 1978, the U.S. Congress has designated Education and Sharing Day on the Rebbe's birthday as a time to pause and recognize our, our responsibility to ensure that our young people have the foundations necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment. Education and Sharing Day is about creating conversations. It's about the conversations we have with our children around the dinner table, the conversations we have with our students in the classrooms, and the conversations that we have day in and day out that have an impact on the hearts and minds of our young ones. The Rebbe taught that in truth, every person is an educator, and we must be, we must be mindful of our ability to impact the lives of others. People are more influenced by the things they do than by the knowledge they are taught. Therefore, beyond the conversations, it is important to promote these ideas through action. In 1974, the Rebbe introduced the charity campaign. This was not a fundraiser for a specific cause or a call to philanthropists to write big checks. Instead, it was a grassroots campaign to train all of us to become givers. The idea is simple. Set aside a box in your home and your office, a charity box that we give, we set aside some charity and start off the day by giving a little bit, and it's not only for adults, but also children should have their own charity box and should be encouraged to give charity every day. This will educate them and us to have empathy and care for others. The catch is to do this consistently. Beyond the value of the accumulated charity money benefiting worthy causes, the hand becomes a giving hand, and one becomes a giver as a result. Although April 19th has been set aside as Education and Sharing Day, its theme and message are relevant every day of the year. Even today, let us reflect on our collective obligation and opportunity to enhance the true education of our children, to serve as proper role models, and to take concrete action to bring more goodness and kindness into our world. And God bless your efforts to make the, a brighter future for everyone in our, in our city and beyond, and may the merit of your crucial work welcome God's blessings in your personal lives as well for, for good health, success, and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Next, we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming...
Vice Mayor, could you pose with the proclamation so that our local publication can take a picture?
I, I'm, I prefer to move on to the next proclamation. Thank you.
Okay.
This is a proclamation proclaiming April 21st through 27th, 2024 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas, more than 26 million people become victims of crime each year, and these crimes also affect family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And the Alameda County District Attorney's Victim Witness Division is dedicated to ensuring the rights of crime victims and their families by providing services to aid in their recovery from the emotional, psychological, social, and economic impact of crime as they reclaim their sense of safety, well-being, and dignity. The DA's Victim Witness Staff assists victims of crime without regard to a person's race, gender, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, and gender identity or immigration status. And whereas victims are faced with many challenges as a result of crime, oftentimes victims enter systems that fail to meet their needs, provide appropriate services, and fail to treat them with the dignity and respect they deserve. Involving survivors helps victim service providers and criminal justice professionals understand the culture, values, and expectations of underserved and unserved victims who seek assistance and justice. And whereas in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by the Victims of Crime Act to provide a permanent source of support for crime victim services and compensation, Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistant Division partners with survivors, community service providers, criminal justice professionals, and victim advocates to enhance a criminal justice system response that is accessible, culturally competent, and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas, under DA Pamela Price's administration, the DA's Victim Witness Assistance Division has become more diverse and multilingual and better represents the lived experiences of our diverse community while receiving a variety of culturally responsive and trauma-informed trainings. And whereas, in 2023, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office served more than 22,500 survivors, provided over 60,000 services for victims and their families, and paid more than $750,000 in compensation and burial expenses, including but not limited to child victims of violence, sexual abuse and stalking victims, survivors of homicide victims, human trafficking, crimes against elders and dependent adults, sexual assault, domestic violence, robbery, and other crimes. And for victims of crime without independent financial means, the District Attorney's Office facilitated financial support through the Victim Compensation Program. And whereas, National Crime Victims Week, April 21st through 27th, 2024, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment of advocates for victim rights. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville, County of Alameda, State of California, that April 21st through 27th, 2024 is hereby proclaimed Victims Rights Week in the City of Emeryville and reaffirms the commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and addressing their needs during Victims Rights Weeks and throughout the year. Express our appreciation for those victims and survivors of crime who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve the response to victims of crime and build a more just community. And do we have somebody to receive?
Good evening. On behalf of Alameda County's District Attorney's Office and DA Price, I would like to thank the City Council for proclaiming Victims Rights Week 2024 and recognizing the options, the services, and hope for crime victims. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you for the work that you do. Our next and final proclamation is that of the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day. Whereas, whereas Earth Day is commemorated annually on April 22nd to demonstrate support for environmental protection, advance sustainability initiatives, and raise awareness about the challenges facing our planet. And whereas, the theme for Earth Day 2024 is Planet versus Plastics, highlighting the urgent need to address the global crisis caused by the production, proliferation, and pollution of plastics, the impact of which can be felt in every corner of the planet. And whereas, plastics have become a pervasive and harmful presence in our ecosystems, endangering wildlife and humans alike, contaminating water sources, and contributing to the degradation of our natural resources. And whereas, a global public health crisis has emerged due to plastics contaminating our water, air, land, and food, resulting in hormone disruptions, reproductive issues, and other health complications, which cost the United States an estimated $250 billion annually in healthcare costs. And whereas, it is imperative that we take collective action to reduce plastic consumption, promote sustainable alternatives, and advocate for policies that mitigate the distribution of single-use plastics, plastic waste. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville on April 22nd, 2024. It is hereby proclaimed as Earth Day in the City of Emeryville, and that all residents, businesses, and institutions are urged to join in efforts to combat plastic pollution, promote environmental sustainability, and work toward a healthier, more resilient planet. That concludes our proclamations. Item five is announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor and Council wanted to let you know that we opened the annual recruitment for scheduled vacancies and seats that are currently vacant last Friday. We have 32 vacancies coming up or that are currently vacant across nine advisory bodies. The applications are due on May 28th by 5:00 PM, and appointments are scheduled to be made at the special meeting on Tuesday, June 18th. The application is available on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And next, we have council members' special announcements and reports on meeting attendance. Members, any announcements or meetings you'd like to announce? Member Pryforce.
I had an opportunity through NHAN, the National Haitian-American Elected Officials' Network, to be a part of a very important discussion between the Kenyan government and military officers and just folks in authority in Haiti, in Haiti, Haiti. And yeah, and a lot of discussion was around Chapter 7 and not using Chapter 7 as a way for Kenya to provide support, military support in Haiti, because Chapter 7, according to UN Charter, would lead to something akin to an invasion. And so it was a very robust discussion, and I hope that both the Kenyan government and that the government in Haiti can come to some sort of understanding so that past mistakes aren't repeated.
Any other announcements? Seeing and hearing none. Item seven is the city manager's report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Item eight is ex parte communications. Members, please review the agenda and let me know if there are any ex parte communications you would like to report. Member Bowers.
Thank you, Mad, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have had a conversation with applicant Packer Jennings for item 12.3. I received communication from a number of folks, including the American Heart Association, the American Lung Association, and the Alameda County Health Department on item 12.4.
Member Carr.
Likewise, I received communication on item 12.4.
Member Pryforce.
I also spoke to Packer Jennings.
And I also had a communication with Packer Jennings via email. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. If any members of the public have public comment for items not on the agenda, please come to the podium. Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay. Good evening. Sharon Wilshire, Community Liaison for the 45th Street Artists Cooperative. And I just wanted to mention that in Alameda County and in the state of California, April is Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. And so while encouraging everyone to take advantage of that year round, perhaps in the two weeks that are left this month, think about taking in a live performance, music, dance, theater, visit a gallery or a museum, and maybe pull out that book of poetry or discover a new author. And I don't know, steal your kids' crayons or something and just have some fun with, with art this month. And the other thing I wanted to mention with a different hat on with, for Emeryville's Celebration of the Arts, that as of this evening, the call to entry for the 38th Annual Emeryville Art Exhibition is in the mail, and we do everything we can to try and use email for that, but this still is our best way to reach people who live or work in Emeryville. And just to remind everybody that if you do live or work here and would like to submit work, the application deadline is June the 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Item 10 is the consent calendar. Are there any items that members would wish to poll? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
The consent agenda is approved. Item next is 11.1. This is a public hearing and to discuss a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville establishing updated development impact fees for the fiscal year. Is there a staff presentation on this?
There is not, Mr. Vice Mayor.
The updated impact fees have been provided to the members. Are there any questions? If not, I would like to open this, this public hearing for public comment. Does, the time is 7:40. This public hearing is now open. Is there anybody who would like to comment on the impact fees update schedule? Seeing no public comment, the public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
The resolution is approved. Next, we have action items. 12.1, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville Adopting the Community Promotion Grant Subcommittee Recommendations. Is there a staff presentation? Yes, hi Rebecca.
Yes, there is.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Mora and fellow council members. I'm here to present the recommendations from the Community Promotions Grant Program and the selection of the subcommittee. The community grant program was established almost 25 years ago as a means of promoting the cultural and artistic aspects of the community and to provide for a high-quality living and working environment here in the City of Emeryville. These grants support the creative life of Emeryville. The program expands public access to STEM, literary, video and film, historic, sports, and performing arts. And these are in our community by supporting the work of the individuals and organizations. Next slide. And our purpose is to fund organizations and individuals, provide various programs and activities that benefit the greater Emeryville community. Next slide. Thank you. So a little bit about, oh, one more back. These are the requirements for grant consideration. It has, you must be from Emeryville, or if the activity for which the request is being made must occur in Emeryville. The applicants must also show a benefit to Emeryville community and provide a long-term community benefit, which is really something potential, we want something that potential will continue in our community, as well as support in a meaningful way. They also must submit a support letter. And this letter, for example, could be from the school district if it's a program that's going to happen within the, the school day, our after-school program. They have to get a support letter from our staff that it is a program that we're able to sustain and support. There's also an affidavit for insurance, ensuring that they will get insurance if selected for a grant. And they also complete a proposed budget worksheet. Next slide. Upon grant approval, they will be required, if they haven't have one already, an Emeryville business license. They'll also be required to get the insurance and the indemnification certificate, as well as provide their W-9 for contracts. Next slide. So these are this year programs that will happen in 2024 and 2025. Applications were opened on January 22nd. They went through February 28th. New this year, thanks to our IT department, we were able to put the applications online, and applicants were able to submit all their forms via this, via laserfish forms, which was a huge help in reducing paper and way, a better way for staff to collect the data and, and gather the information. This year, we had 23 qualified applications. That's 10 more than we had last year. And on March 11th, the subcommittee met. Next slide. Oh, big thank you to our subcommittee members, Taryn Walker, Ronald Davis, Gail Donaldson, and Nicholas Robert, who spent a very long meeting that night in March in helping hearing from all of the applicants and, and deducing what would be their recommendations. So big thank you to them. So just to break down the financial piece of this, they can apply up to $10,000. We have in the general fund budgeted $73,500, and it's not to exceed that amount. The recommended recipients this year, we have three applicants that are brand new. Those include Biktopia as one of the examples. Two of our applicants were new last year, and this is our second year. Two of our applicants were new last year, and this is our second year, and seven received grants over the last three to five years. Next slide, please. Thank you. On this slide, this is breaking down the recommendations of, which you also received a spreadsheet in your pocket. It lists all the programs and the events that were, how much they requested in the grant, and then how much was recommended in the award. Next slide, please. These are the programs and events, unfortunately, that were not recommended to receive a grant. Out of these 11 applications, nine of them are new and never seen before programs and event ideas. You did receive a spreadsheet with all of this information as well. This year's applicants were very unique. It was a difficult decision on how the Subcommittee came to the process. It was very competitive, and it was a difficult deliberation as all applicants brought unique experiences and opportunities for our community, and we appreciate all the time, energy, and effort it took to apply. And last slide. My pen's falling. There we go. We're also seeking your direction with the future of the Subcommittee. Currently, the Committee is made up of two members from the PAC, the Public Art Committee, and two members of the Parks and Recreation Committee. And an opportunity to become more well-rounded, representatives from committees affected by the Community Promotions Grants could be included, one member from the Commission on Aging, one member from the Economic Development Advisory Committee, one member from Public Art Committee, and one member for Parks and Recreation Committee. With that, we are asking council to give direction on the makeup of the Subcommittee and ask that a motion also be made for this recommendation. There are also several members of applicants that applied here tonight, and we appreciate your time. Thank you so much. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Rebecca. Are there any, members, are there any clarifying questions?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, Member Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca, for presenting.
Thank you.
On slide three, there was the criteria. Can we, can we see that again, please?
Of course.
Just want to know if all of these are requirement or only some of these are requirement?
Those are all the requirements to have your application, to, for us to accept your application.
They must be in Emeryville, or the activity for which the request is being made must occur in Emeryville.
Correct.
Okay. Understood. Thank you so much.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? I actually had one. It's wonderful news that so many new people applied, and I'm trying to think of ways that we can, I would hate for those folks with the very competitive applications for them to be discouraged by not receiving anything. Is there any consideration for, I guess, in the future? Is there feedback provided to applicants who are denied if they request it? With the idea being that they could then improve their application in subsequent years?
Yeah, there is opportunity. After this evening's meeting, I'll be reaching out to those that did not and looks for opportunities such as our contracts program where we can provide some of these classes to our community through fee-based programming. Also, how can we implement some of the events within our current events? There's possible opportunity, but I'm always willing to give feedback.
That's great. Then we don't discourage their enthusiasm.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll take a public comment on this item. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on the grant recipients, please come to the podium now. You'll have two minutes each to speak.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Eleanor Clement Glass. I'm with Stage Bridge, which is an organization that provides performing arts classes for seniors who are over 50. The grant that we submitted was for Storybridge to provide storytelling into, to bring storytelling into the public schools with some of the Stage Bridge teaching artists and storytellers. We are not recommended in this round and are disappointed, but we wanted to let you know that this program is very exciting in that it's, it's one of our strongest programs for intergenerational programming. So we are able to bring teaching, we teach storytelling classes to seniors, and in fact, we did get a grant last year from the city of Emeryville and are now in the Emeryville Senior Center where we have about 14 Emeryville folks who are learning how to do storytelling. We had hoped to be able to expand into the public schools so that they and other Stage Bridge storytellers would be able to bring those storytelling skills and literacy engagement into the schools. The program itself is about 10 to 14 weeks. We started in 2002, where we started in Oakland, Berkeley, and Richmond, and over the next 17 years, we expanded to 14 schools in Oakland, three in Berkeley, six in Richmond, and we're hoping that at some point it will be Emeryville City Schools as well. So we, as I said, we have a current grant now. We are hoping to continue to engage seniors in storytelling and begin to make more relationships. We do have a relationship with the Emory Middle School, and that principal was very enthusiastic and hopeful that we would be able to bring storytelling to their students. So thank you so much for your consideration. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is May Howell, and I am with Scientific Adventures for Girls. We were recommended for this grant, and I just wanted to share a little bit about us. We have been, as an organization, for 10 years, and Anna Yates has been our flagship school. We started there 10 years ago. I'm happy to say we've been able to continue on and expand. We teach after-school STEM to elementary school students, and now currently in our program, we've been able to expand it and support the middle school and high school students at Anna Yates and keep them involved and offer them resources. And we have a scholar club where we connect them with people from Apple and people from Pixar. So it's a long-term relationship we have. We hope we will be able to continue it. And while Anna Yates is our flagship school, we've also branched out to 23 other schools in the East Bay. I wanted to thank the council for granting us last year and also for Rebecca's support and the superintendent's support, and just wanted to share a little bit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, council members.
Welcome.
My name is Erin Hokumura. I'm the Secretary and Board Officer for Fishnetson Film, and I'm representing Robbie Kendall, the CEO. And I'm going to be reading a statement that he provided because he was not able to be here himself tonight. Hi, everyone. I apologize for not being here this evening. I'm sitting on a filmmaker panel this evening representing queer cinema at the Poppy Jasper International Film Festival in Gilroy. First, I want to say how grateful I am to live in a city that values art, diversity, and community. We at Fishnetson Film Incorporated have similar values as we produce events that bring a community together to celebrate queer film, queer performance art, and cinema. We are excited about our event this fall, our annual film festival. This will be the first time we combine an indoor and outdoor festival while streaming a variety of films online. Indoors, we'll have planned for two back-to-back shows of our signature drag plus queer cinema programming, and this will be at Bureau 510 on Hollis. Outdoors, we'll have tables and activities for our guests to network and establish connections on a personal and business level. Online, we'll be showing a variety of short films submitted to us from all over the world. Not only will this festival be a city event to bring our community together, it will also bridge our guests and sponsors with content and filmmakers from all around the world. I'm very excited how quickly our small but mighty organization continues to evolve as we gain more breadth and attract more guests and sponsors. I've recently gotten more press coverage and established more partnerships so we can produce more uplifting events at a time when we need them most. With this grant, we hope to update our website and cover costs, including cost for talent to provide an effective film festival this fall. On behalf of our board and our officers, thank you so much for the recommendation you've made for us, and as a queer artist, thank you for providing grant opportunities to bring more arts and events like this to Emeryville that may, that value art, diversity, and community. Strongly believe we need more joyful and engaging.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the Friends of the Golden Gate Library, and we're going to do the music thing this summer, and we wanted to thank everybody for your support, and we're going to have a great couple of concerts, so I hope all you guys could get out to see them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Rob Arias, Don Housler, and Randy Orton. Emeryville Historical Society officers and researchers, we're a 35-year-old nonprofit and among those recommended to receive grant funding. Hope you had the opportunity to take the Park Avenue District Walking Tour, as more than 1,000 people have so far. Tour got a nice write-up in SF Gate and on the East Bay yesterday podcast, among other accolades. The building we're in here right now, stop number 11 on the tour, built in 1903 at the cost of $8,491, by the way. As successful as this tour is, we think the one we have planned for the Emeryville Greenway is going to be even better, mainly because of the amount of pedestrian traffic it gets. There's an incredible amount of curiosity in the city for history, and we look forward to delivering these stories to the public. I think that what we're most proud of, these stories, is their inclusivity. They're for everyone in the city, young, old, rich, poor, all walks of life. Everyone in the city can benefit from these tours and understanding more about who lived here and what existed before them. History is what binds generations of Emeryville residents, and we thank you for consideration. I didn't introduce my companions here properly. I'm sorry. Don Housler, he is a co-founder of the Emeryville Historical Society, and of course, Randy Orton, a, I would call him a native Emeryville resident, born and bred.
Born in Oakland, but raised in Emeryville.
Yeah, and happens to be a 30-year Emeryville police officer. Correct?
Correct.
And went through all the Emeryville School District.
I was going to let Rob do it, because I'm usually the unidentified midnight patrolman. I don't like to talk in front of people, but I thought it was kind of necessary because Emeryville has a unique history. And for those of you who've been around and read it, it always seems to, it always seems to lead you further into a rabbit hole, or it really, really gets you involved in something that you didn't think would ever occur in Emeryville. Like Rob said, I moved here with my family in 1957. I was six years old. Went through the school system, worked for the police department for about 30 years, and retired in 2007. But I was always amazed with the work that these people have done on their own, what they've done and what they've preserved and what they've educated people on, things that I didn't even know. And I'll just leave it with a few comments about things. If I told you that a small business owner from Emeryville during the 1970s would have a granddaughter that would rise to world recognition and as an award-winning actress, this is a small business owner, small business on 53rd Street, and I don't know how many people would even think of the name of Zendaya. Her grandfather had a business here. I went to school, I was fortunate enough to go to school with her father, and they went to Emory High and graduated. So I don't think you can say enough about the girl myself, the woman. What would you say if I said that an election in Emeryville was decided by a roll of the dice because two of the, two of the people, candidates, got the same amount of votes, 438, and they rolled the dice to decide who was going to be the council member? Or that a big band orchestra leader during the '30s, '40s, '50s would light at Emory High School and would change the lives of so many Emory High School students, even taking some of them to play at a World's Fair? And there's more, but that's okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Alex Greenlaw. I'm the treasurer for the nonprofit Biktopia. I'm joined by my fellow board member, Jesse, in the back. We, Biktopia operates, is a nonprofit that serves to increase access to cycling in the East Bay. We operate two community bike workshops, one at Alcatraz and Adeline Avenue in Berkeley, and then one right just south of the Amtrak station here in Emeryville, the Biktopia Annex. And we're thrilled and honored to have been recommended for most of the funding requests we put in for a community grants proposal, which will be financing a workshop over the summer for participants to build their own bikes, starting from frames and other components with our guidance, and culminating in a community celebration ride, as well as the Second Annual Biktopia Alicoat, a scavenger hunt styled bike race beginning of next summer, which will highlight hopefully Emeryville and East Bay works of art and community pieces. And yeah, we're also just really honored and excited to mesh and work together with the Emeryville City Government. In the three years that Jesse's been operating the Biktopia Annex here in Emeryville, we've actually unfortunately been the only bike shop here, and Rebecca promises me that luckily that will be changing soon, we hope. But yeah, we're excited to serve the community, and if anyone needs a bike, hit us up.
Thank you.
I saw a Biktopia event just this past weekend, I think. There was a lot of activity. It's cool. Sharon Wilshire, Emeryville Celebration of the Arts. And the idea of a free arts library for the public has been on a wish list for us for several years, but without a permanent public home, it just wasn't feasible. But now that our organization is contracted to manage and program Gallery 4509, which is on the new Emory campus, so it presents a new opportunity to us, and the library concept has opened up. We envision the library as a meaningful resource open to the public, for residents, for those who work in Emeryville, and for students, whether for technical information, cultural insights, or simply to learn something new or enjoy beauty in all of its many forms on a lunch break. We're excited about this possibility. We've done some informal outreach to Emeryville employees and to residents in the neighborhood and received positive feedback and interest in this offering of a new gallery. So we're really appreciative of this grant, which will allow us to do this. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Karp, ByDirect Dance Company. Nancy Karp and dancers here in Emeryville for the past four decades, and I'm thrilled that our organization has been recommended for funding for our program to continue at NEAT School. We've been teaching in the schools for several decades, and each year, it's, the shape of it is slightly different, and that's what keeps it alive and exciting. And if you're not familiar with the program, we teach most of the grades with a team teaching approach with two professional dance teachers who specialize in teaching for children. The program is in, during the school hours, the teachers participate, the entire classroom participates, and they culminate in a performance of the children performing before their other classmates and their parents and guardians. And over the years, we've had to bring in more and more chairs for the parents to come and see. The students also have an opportunity to see my dance company, which is a professional contemporary dance company, perform at the annual Emeryville Art Exhibition every year. And it's a wonderful field trip for the children who have been studying dance now with our teachers to actually see a professional company perform, and then it's a bonus to be able to see the art in which is the environment for the performance. So I just want to thank the council for your support in the past, and I have some visuals of our last program. I'll just give you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hello, my name's Andrea Brewer, I and my family are here tonight representing the water movement. We're a collective of maritime industry professionals, outdoor educators, and health and safety advocates. We applied for the Emeryville Water Festival, and while we did not receive funding this cycle, just speaking on behalf of our experience, we were very much encouraged in our interactions with Rebecca and the committee. And to your point, Vice Mayor Mora, as both an applicant and a member of the advisory committee last year, I would really appreciate the opportunity to give feedback to applicants. At this point, there isn't really, you can go back and listen to like the recording of the meeting, but each applicant does not receive like specialized feedback, even though within the committee, we speak about each project individually, so it would be a relatively simple like space to slip in, like a piece of paper in which you can jot your notes down, and then the applicants receive that feedback to hone their application for next year. So, thank you.
Thank you for your feedback on the process, also. Any other public comment? Okay, let's move to member comments. Members, any comment or discussion on the item? Member Pryforce.
I just want to thank everyone for being a part of this process. Fortunately, we didn't have enough funds, and I hope that the future of Emeryville is that we'll have enough. To qualify to be an applicant, you have to be doing some really amazing things in Emeryville, and I believe that Emeryville should both acknowledge and reward and support that. And so, and I'm not very good at like platitudes, like, oh yeah, you guys are great, you know, like, I actually want to extend the community service. So recently, Su Advisor Carson released a sort of an opportunity for small businesses to, within his district, to apply for a grant. And so, so I actually met with business leaders here in Emeryville to help them with that, since that is my background. And so, I also want to extend that to all of you, that if it helps to have a council member provide a letter of reference, or you just need some narrative help, I think I've done that before, yeah, I would be happy to help. So please, give me a call, email me, and I'd be happy as a council member, but just as a fellow resident in Emeryville, to be of support. Thanks.
Other member comments. Member Karp.
Congratulations to all of you who've received the grants. Thank you for doing all the good work that you do for Emoryville, and for those who didn't receive the grants, thank you for some of the feedback, and still thank you for all the good work that you do. I hope that we establish a process in which you can be given positive feedback to incentivize you to continue doing the good work that you do, and to make your applications better so that you can be stronger candidates for future grants. Thank you.
So I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think the sheer number of applicants and the competitiveness this year speaks to the success of the program. You know, of course, more money is always better, but I expect there will also be more applicants. But I think it highlights the artistic and creative nature of our city, and the diversity of community benefit programs that we have. And I look forward, I also really appreciate feedback on the process, the subcommittee composition to increase diversity in the future as a potential change, and then also the notes for improvement from the subcommittee members, I think could make for a more fair and inclusive, transparent process. Do we have a motion on the resolution?
Before we do that, Vice Mayor, I have a point of clarification on establishing the new, newly recommended subcommittee. Could we also include maybe members of the public to be a part of that subcommittee, and open up the application process, so that a member of the public can also sit on the subcommittee for that one time, and make a decision with the rest of the recommended members of the subcommittee? It would be a better involvement, more, it would promote inclusivity of feedback from the public. That's just one point that I would like to add to the subcommittee, to have maybe one or two members of the community at large in Emeryville, who are not on any other committees, to be part of that committee.
Member Pryforce.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea, Member Karp. Could be like a gateway drug for someone who may want to eventually join a committee. And I think it would be, it would increase the level of diversity. I received an email from John Suter, you all did, and he proved a really, he made a really good point about diversity and inclusion equity. And I just want to say, John Suter, that you schooled me, you know, you could teach an old dog new tricks, and he was really good about explaining geography, and that the membership of a lot of our committees may be coming from a particular area in Emeryville. And because it's coming from that particular area, it may lock us into a particular type of view of the rest of Emeryville, and that we need to diversify. And so, so this could be an opportunity on that committee to help diversify and mix things up, when it comes to making sure that both east, west, north, and south Emeryville is represented geographically. So, yeah, so I agree. You would like to second that motion? Oh, you didn't do a motion, okay.
I think we're just discussing. I just have a few practical concerns with, so I like the idea of broadening the membership of the committee to include members of more of the existing committees that we have. One concern with grabbing a member of the public for this process, keeping in mind that we have a process by which members of the public, in effect, join committees through showing interest in various aspects of the city and arts, I feel like it makes sense to simply tap into that talent. Once you introduce an ad hoc appointment for the sole purpose of this committee, I think that invites a, it's a whole new process that I think complicates what doesn't need to be overly complicated. So my preference is to, you know, the staff proposal to broaden the diversity of the committee, which is on the table, I think that's sufficient for now, and I, my preference would be to, let's try that out, and let's keep iterating this process. If we really think that there's some unmet needs or voices, you know, in future years, I think we can always revisit this. But at this time, my preference would be to follow the staff recommendation regarding broadening the committee and increasing the diversity through the number of committee participants. Member Pryforce.
So according to Rebecca, according to the makeup, I'm sorry, I'm using my visual memory, the, it's four, it's four, it's one, two, three, four, and so maybe a tiebreaker could be a fifth, in case it's two on two when it comes to the selection process. Wait a minute, there's a typo. Emeryville Square Miles, I'm sorry, yeah, we misspelled, Emeryville Square Miles, and wanted to, sorry, my brain, sorry. But yeah, the, yeah, so there's, that could be five, maybe that is the reason why it'd be a good idea to have somebody who may be a little neutral, and open, and variable.
Could we get the slide up, maybe, to understand the current state and what's proposed? I think that would be clarifying.
And I might have a proposal to share, one second. There we go. There is a possibility, if we are referring to a tiebreaker, to maybe a member of the B-PAC, the bike ped, possibly, to make it five total, instead of, and then we can reevaluate the adding of a community member in the future?
I would support that. Member Karp.
Thank you, Rebecca, for bringing the slide up, and Vice Mayor for proposing to bring it up. I think this is a good opportunity to involve someone from the community to come in and be a part of this. We may not, we may not get applications, but for some people who can not make it to all meetings of communities, we've had that issue before, where the Commission on Aging did not have enough members or a quorum, this may be one way for a community member to participate. We may get multiple applications, or we may not get more applications, but it's worth a try. So I would propose doing this now, when we have the opportunity to do it, add a member of the B-PAC, plus add, solicit applications from members of the community to be a part of this, if they are inclined to do so on time, and maybe make it something that may motivate them to join future communities. So I would like to make a motion to that effect, that we take the staff recommendations, plus add a member of the B-PAC, and maybe add one or two members of the community to this subcommittee in the future. If we need a tiebreaker, I would propose two, we may get more multiple applications. If not, then at least one.
So I would support the, the member of the B-PAC, I think that would provide the tiebreaker, it would tap into our existing committees. But again, I think it overly complicates the process to now pull in a sixth person on an ad hoc committee. So I would make a substitute motion to include these fourth-listed committee members and the B-PAC committee going forward. In addition, I would also like to approve the, included in my motion is the approval of the staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Vice Mayor Mora, I'm sorry, was there a second to Councilmember Karp's, you seconded the Councilmember Pryforce, thank you.
Member Pryforce.
So, the reason why also emphasizing diversity, equity, inclusion with Member Karp's recommendation is, so when we are selecting from the different committees, so they already have to go through a process of being on the committee and being a part of it, and we all, encourage you all to join our committees, please. But what happens is that when they are reviewing applicants, and the diversity of the applicants, kind of, is sort of what the issue that came up with the public art issue, where diversity may have come up, that we, that through the process of being on the committee, and then you go from committee to this ad hoc committee, the makeup of the committee may not necessarily reflect everyone here, and the applicants. And I think that that, this is an opportunity, even though that it would increase it to about seven, and I can get feedback from Rebecca, if that's a lot of managing, that's a lot of cats to herd. But I think being able to add non-committee members to this committee would ensure that we are, that we are as much as possible being, that it is an inclusive process for those who are applying, that they feel, well, hey, I didn't, I got rejected, but I also didn't see someone who reflected me on the judging body. And so, that's why I second the motion from Member Karp.
So we have a motion and a substitute motion. I'm actually curious if we have a, maybe by a show of hands from the members. I'm thinking about separating the committee makeup topic from actually just approving the staff recommendations. Would people be open to that discussion, treating these as two separate topics?
I don't see how we can treat it as two separate topics.
So we have the, we have the recommendations, and this subcommittee topic is for the future.
The recommendations for the grants, yes, I would be inclined to approve those recommendations.
Okay.
From the subcommittee that was already, that has already made that decision, yes. Do you want me to make a motion to that effect?
Point of order?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to ask the city attorney to weigh in on where we're at with all the motion nonsense.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers, through the chair, Vice Mayor Mora. You have two motions currently on the floor for debate. I would recommend taking action on those motions, before adding or withdrawing those motions, and taking action with respect to those before moving on, and deliberating on additional motions.
So let's move forward, on the substitute motion that was made, this was the one to include a member of the B-PAC Committee for a total of five members, and approve the recommendations. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Karp?
Nay.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
And Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent, the motion fails.
So, one moment, Member Pryforce. So now, please call the roll for the original motion, which is Member Karp to include the member of the public.
One or two members of the public. Before I make a clear motion on that, may I ask a question of Rebecca, who's done the presentation?
Yes, please.
And any member of the city staff, please feel free to weigh in. I just want to know, would it be overly burdensome for the city to organize getting a member of the community on the subcommittee, or one or two members of the committee?
It would be a process that we would have to develop in order to recruit and vet those applications, and then there would have to be some discussion on how we decide who those people, who the people we choose to be on the subcommittee. So it would be a whole new process to develop.
Clarifying question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. So this process would also have to be done for the members on the recommended committees, which is the Commission of Aging, Economic Development Advisory Committee, as well as the Public Art Committee, or Parks and Recreation Committee, because there are multiple members on that as well, correct?
Yeah, so, correct. There's already a process in place when they apply to be on the committee, and then within those, each of those committees, there's a recommendation before we have the meeting, of someone to be nominated to be on the subcommittee within each of those committees. within each of those committees. And then that creates our subcommittee.
Okay, so point of clarification again, continued.
Yes.
Thank you. So you could develop the process could be developed. Is that a possibility? Where you could include the members of the public?
Yes.
In that case, I would like to make a motion to include at least two members of the public, along with the recommended members, one member from the Commission on Aging, one member from the Economic Development Advisory Committee, one member from the Public Art Committee, one member from Parks and Recreation, and one member from B-PAC and two members from the community at large.
Point of order. We have a motion sitting on the table from the member making the motion. The member has to withdraw the motion to make the new motion. Can I ask for legal to clarify?
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. That is correct. There should be action taken on the original motion first before any new motion is put before this body.
Thank you, City Attorney. I would, in that case, like to withdraw my original motion and move forward with the newly motion placed on table.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
No.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Nay.
Motion to approve all of the people who have been recommended for grants in the amounts that have been recommended by the committee.
Second.
The roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
The recommended grants are approved. Member Pryforce.
Congratulations to everybody who's waiting to get their grant.
Yeah, so I also... The two members is a great idea because, as you all can see, you got to have a tiebreaker. And so making sure that we have this committee that can not go through what we are going through right now, it would be great. So, yeah. So I'll wait for Member Carr to make that motion again. Yeah.
Thank you all and congratulations. I'd like to move on to item 12.2.
Point of order.
Yes.
Are you asking if members are done with this item before any other motions are made?
Yes. Are there any further motions?
Yeah, I... At this time, City Attorney, are we going to go just back to the old subcommittee if there is no tiebreakers for the... For one of the two motions?
Correct. The two motions that resulted in a two-to-two vote failed to pass.
Correct. So we are back to the original subcommittee of what it was, correct?
Correct. You have not changed the subcommittee composition at this point.
And can we bring this item back at some point?
Yes, you can bring this back as a future agenda item.
Thank you so much. I am done with this item at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 12.2, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting the Community Grant Subcommittee and Public Art Committee Recommendations to Select Artists. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Amber Evans, Community Development Coordinator. Delighted to see you all tonight. I bring before you something I just want to note is that Rebecca's slides that introduced the community grants, a lot of that information overlaps with the visual art grants, except for a few things. Community promotion grants used to include visual installations. It was noted that the increase of demand for grants, we should pull that out. So the visual art grants are not supported by the general fund. They're supported by the Art and Public Places Fund. They are not limited to $10,000. They're... The pilot, which happened two years ago, so there's not a long history that we had one year of pilot, and now we're having... We had us... This is our second year. And based on feedback from the artists, which felt that their installations were limited by the $10,000, that grant amount was raised to $17,500. So you'll see that number proposed. It is the cap on grant applications. And that these are really for installations. There are no activities or programs or events located in there. I will note that at the same time as the community promotion grants, the Rotten City Cultural District now has just closed around of many grants. And that funding opportunity was extended to all the community promotion grant recipients and applicants. So there... To the question that had been raised about were there any other funding opportunities? Additionally, there were additional requirements for the applicants for visual art grants. They needed to have a site identified and a letter from that site. They also needed to have either identified a plan for making notification or have signed a form where they signed that they had notified the neighbors of the proposed installation. With that, I think I've made the distinction. I do want to say that all the slides where she said, "Thank you", all the hard work that went into it, the long panel, I agree with all of those statements. I just didn't want to show that to you again. With that, the next slide. The things I will note is that there was a significant change between the pilot and this second round. That was in part because we did two workshops, February 8th and 13th, one in the day, one in the evening. We had over 50 people filling this room. Food was offered. And there was an extensive technical assistance and discussion with the artists, workshopping possible grants. With that, we got 29 applications that totaled over $430,000, submitted for 16 sites. And to cover those six... Some of those applications were for duplicate sites or multiple application on a single site. But to cover them all would be about $300,000. Some artists submitted to multiple sites, and five sites had that duplicate situation. Next slide. I think I've spoken to a lot of this, but we went through the process with that selection committee after they'd gone through the promotion grant. So it was a long night. But they compared each applicant by site. So picking a top applicant if there were multiple for a site with interviews conducted for the same sites in successive orders. Panelists then indicated which sites they would recommend artwork. They... The panelists nominated the top three grants, and that totaled $52,500. They then said to the Public Art Committee which one difference between the community promotion grants and the visual art grants is that the visual art grants go to the PAC before they come to you. When the PAC reviewed the visual art grants, they were asked to look at six other possible installations if they were to make recommendation for an additional allocation. Another difference was that these funds had only been appropriated to $50,000. So that was really restricting that to three grants and not even the total grant amount for those. And so a recommendation from the panel was to consider other sites in no ranked order, other installations. And that was potentially an increased appropriation of $85,500 or $138,000. Next slide. The Public Art Committee met shortly after the panel, reviewed those three artists and the six additional. They also looked at two other artists that hadn't been moved forward by the selection panel for competing on the same site and then nominated by a PAC member, and then moved forward with a recommendation for seven of the artists to move forward, making no modifications to the artists chosen for the included sites. Next slide. We do not collect demographic information explicitly on our applications. It may be something that we might want to do in the future. But in the discussion and in the expressed demographic information of people, this is what I was able to glean. It may not be completely accurate, but it is to the best of my knowledge. And part of the thought and discussion around extending the list of applications to be included is to get a little more diversity of both people who are living and working here in Emeryville, because we threw the net a lot further, women, people of color. We did not move the needle on queer, but that was a lower population in the overall application puzzle. And I only say that as those who identified in their applications or communication. Next slide. This is the geographic distribution of the installations, characterized by if they're funded, if they weren't considered or recommended forward. Moving forward, I'm going to run you through a lot of pictures and less talking. Next slide, please. Of the top three, Rising Sun had multiple applications for it, and this work by Sean Griffin was recommended for the full grant amount. Next slide, please. Additionally, in the top three, Joey Rose was proposed for this Green Heron work at the top grant amount on Bay Cities Protectorate on 67th Street. It's on the backside of a building that currently has murals on it. Next slide, please. Rachel Wolf-Goldsmith was asked by the fire department to consider a proposal on this site. They are very excited about this. They made strong endorsement. To clarify what you're seeing on the slide, the artist uses photographs in their process to put the work on the wall and then paints in the painterly fashion as you see on the left. So the content is as you will see on the right and the style as you see on the left, also for the full grant amount. Next slide, please. Here we now start to get to those recommendations that if additional appropriation is made, and that is an action that's being asked of you tonight, these artists might be considered additionally. John Patrick Thomas was one of many applicants that were considered for the Pool and Lobby site at ECL... I'm sorry, the Pool and Gym Lobby at ECL. And he also, in addition to the mural, proposed providing coloring books for site users that were based off the mural that included these elements of healthy living. Next slide. Chris Granille is a former Emeryville resident who had proposed on multiple sites. Again, in here, the sketch, as you see at the bottom, is intended for that entire lower portion of the building at Emory Tech in the sky... And the detailing and the colors as on the top of the slide. Next slide. At the senior center, there were a few proposals for within what's known... We refer to it with the Purchase Award as the "Klocknuck". This is a small, sort of unusually shaped space. And the panel and the PAC recommended moving forward with this sculptural element from Sama Arusta at a lower... I should say, the last slide. It was $9,000. This is $6,500. Next slide, please. Additionally, at the senior center, Juan Lopez, who had previously been the recipient of both when visual arts were within the community promotion grants, he's done a number of these mosaics around the water fountains at ECL. But they're all within the school site. And in this opportunity with the visual arts, he was informed he needed to be in a site where that could be the public broadly of Emeryville could see that work. And this location around the historic water fountain that doesn't work but is visually compelling is a new proposal. The visual on the lower is an existing installation at ECL. The images to the left are the species and the sketch of what that... The actual work in the center is supposed to be, and that is for the full amount. Next slide, please. So the selection panel... Just to clarify, the selection panel, nine minute artists for consideration that were not included in the PAC recommendation. I'll just show those now. Packer Jennings, which, if you mentioned, had been in conversation, has proposed three birdhouses, functional birdhouses, that would be in replica of famous buildings in three locations generally described here. I understand from the artist it could be relocated as needed for the best functionality. And with comment back from the city. And I believe the artist is here tonight to speak to his proposal. The next slide, please. Oh, and this is for the full amount. And notably, this... I want to remind everyone, because I didn't go over the requirements. This is not our mural program. We actually have a separate mural program. So the diversity of media was also of interest and inclination of the program. And that came up in this proposal by Fernanda Martinez. There were many murals proposed on this site. This one has both a mural element but also 3D relief in foam. And so there was a little more interest in seeing what that different media might express on the building. But the PAC did not recommend moving forward. And next slide. And then so just the PAC recommendations. And next slide. In totality are for $103,000, which would be a new appropriation of $53,000. This is all from the Art and Public Places Fund. The representation across these three factors that I looked at spreads a little more than if we were to just do the three. And the PAC recommended moving forward with this expanded grant funding. Next slide, please. So the recommendation tonight is two things. One is to fund the seven artists that were proposed, which gets to emerging artists. This is one of two calls that the city does that really gets to emerging artists. The Purchase Award, anybody who gets juried is in there. The Bus Shelter, but that's not a call we do. It's a way we get to art. The Bus Shelter is a call where that can be... You can be in any media. You represent that on a flat surface, and it can be included in the program. This was designed after the Public Art Master Plan, identified interest in having artists come up with new ideas, being the most creative people in our community, that this would be a way that we would hear things that we didn't even know how to ask for what we wanted. So additional... The expansion from the $50,000 goes in additional media beyond the murals. And it allows for an additional diversity in those who are producing the artwork. And so the request tonight is the seven artists versus the three, the appropriation of additional $53,000 of Art and Public Places Funds to support this grant making. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the members?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question.
Yes.
So the $53,000 in additional art in Public Places Fund, where... Where is this the one that you're proposing that comes out of the general fund?
No, no. To be very clear, all proposals here would be funded with Art and Public Places Funds. We just had appropriated more than $50,000. There are funds available in the Art and Places Fund, particularly this year, kind of like transfer tax. We had an unanticipated large development pay into the fund their art fee rather than putting on site. Most larger developments locate, commission artwork and put it on site. This particular development did not. Therefore, there is unexpected, unbudgeted funds available in the art fund available to cover these costs as requested.
So there's a windfall, and you're proposing that we support seven artists with that windfall? Wonderful. Thank you so much for the explanation.
Any other questions? Okay, let's... We'll open now a public comment for this item. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak, please come to the podium, and you'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to read fast. My project, one of nine recommended by the Subcommittee for Visual Arts Grant Funding to the Public Art Committee, faced questions during their meeting that I couldn't address directly strictly due to the Zoom disturbance. The next PAC meeting was postponed, leaving me with this sole opportunity to address these concerns before the city council's decision. I'm requesting funding to create three extravagant functional birdhouse sculptures featuring grand architecture to be installed along the Emeryville Greenway. This concept marries the seriousness of environmentalism with playful humor. Humans use grand architecture to cultivate spaces that project power, evoke reverence, inspire awe. And this project elevates the bird status by creating structures featuring grand architecture, the columns, the flourishes, the domes, and then letting birds live in them. These are stylized sculptures about the language of grand architecture. These are stylized sculptures about the language of grand architecture. My St. Peter's Basilica is not the one in Vatican City today, but an alternate design. My Capitol Building is both truncated and stylized. Anyone can enjoy these grand birdhouses without any knowledge of the specific building or architecture. I will not select the site at Hollis and Powell for my proposal images, and I will get a letter of support from any nearby business before a site selection is finalized. This work activates the Greenway and aligns well with Emeryville's current effort to integrate nature into the cityscape, complementing existing green infrastructure projects as exemplified by the Fortieth Street Green Multi-Modal Project and the Public Art Theme, bringing nature into the urban streetscape. Tonight, you have the opportunity to help launch the public art career of a low-income Emeryville-based artist. I hope you'll consider funding this project. And lastly, I fully support the other artists' projects. Whatever the outcome, I really appreciate everyone's hard work and time and consideration through this process. Thank you to the PAC, to Amber, Rebecca, Public Works, and the city council. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Packer.
Also, I do have a letter of support from, that was just recently added, from the Golden Gate Bird Alliance, which is formerly the Golden Gate Autobahn Society that you should all have a copy of.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other public comment?
Sharon Wilshire, former PAC committee member. And I am hoping that you will consider Packer Jennings' proposal this evening for funding for a number of reasons. I think you can see from the selections that were heavy to the, I mean, beautiful murals, but to murals. His proposal provides three-dimensional work. And as someone who lives very close to the new extension, that I live very close to the new extension of the Emeryville Greenway, it's been really exciting to see all the activity on the Greenway, to see joggers, walkers, families, et cetera. And I really think these would be a great addition to the Greenway. I see all these folks, many of them interacting with the artwork that's already there. And to me, public art, I appreciate the beauty of public art, but also often things that maybe make you stop for a minute and reflect and think, what is this? What's this about? So I think that one of the things that was really unfortunate, and you're aware of this, is that because I happened to be on the same Zoom the night of the PAC meeting, when things end, the Zoom was shut down, and I didn't even know if the meeting was going to continue. But that didn't allow Packer the opportunity to respond to any questions or concerns that the PAC members might have had. And I personally have had, I mean, I was thinking about this. One really good case in point for this, that artist Sayed Alavi, who is the artist who created a very successful utility box program here in Emeryville, the color yellow that he chose for his utility boxes was challenged by several members of the PAC committee. But Sayed was able to respond directly, and the yellow remains. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm Teresa Lahey, line installation artist here in Emeryville. And I also want to support Packer Jennings' birdhouses, which are supplied by the Cornell Center for Ornithology. So they are low-income, family-friendly housing for birds. Since 1970, the U.S. has lost over a billion birds to our bird population. And I remember when I first moved here to Emeryville in the early '90s, there was a symphony of bird song in the mornings. And now it's a quintet. So this both unexpected form of art and also supporting the bird population when we see all the development that has gone on in the city. I think this is a great project, and I hope you'll support it.
Thank you for your comment. I'll now turn the discussion to members. Member Bowthers.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the members of the Public Art Committee and the Subcommittee, as well as all the artists who are either here tonight or perhaps watching at home, for your work and your commitment to keeping Emeryville's identity really focused on culture and art, and the fact that we are a makerspace, and that that is really part of the fabric of who we are, and it's really intertwined with what we do. In my time here on the city council, I've seen us make some really amazing progress in the way we develop and produce art and make and showcase art here. It's not just limited to the celebration of the arts, but we had Sea Walls was here recently. We had an opportunity to really have a world-class mural installation over a course of 10 to 15 days. We've had a lot of work on sculpture, the mural program, the Art in the Bus Shelters program. There's many things that have been done to really accentuate this. So I'm very pleased with the recommendations that were made by the committee, and I'm supportive of all those artists tonight and their funding requests. Something else that we have done that was mentioned by a couple of the public speakers is there's been a focus on Emeryville reclaiming the land and the space that we have in nature. And this was an industrial place for a very long time. It was a place that was one of the greatest violators of environmental stewardship. It polluted this community deeply, and it took many, many years and millions and millions of dollars from the redevelopment agency to remove hazards from the environment that were toxic to the community and nature. Emeryville is situated in a place where we're on the bay, and we're the home of the Emeryville Crescent. And with that, thousands of migratory birds pass through Emeryville every year. And in my time here, I've championed issues around protecting the avian community, including our Bird Safe Building Glass Design Program, our Pollinator Program, our Urban Tree Program, and opportunities to expand the connection between humans and nature, its smallest creatures. So I'm really, I'm really excited about the application that was put forward by Packer Jennings. And I'm going to place a motion on the table to approve the resolution, but amend it in the following ways. Whereas clauses number 10 and 11 will add Packer Jennings' name as a recipient, resolve clauses numbers one and two will add Packer's name as a recipient, where resolve clause number three will change 53,000 to 70,500 as the total amount to be increased. And resolve clause number four will add Packer Jennings' name with an award of $17,500, with instruction not included in the resolution to allow for the installation of these to be done in agreement with the location approved by the Public Works Department, and that the size and space and nature of the actual structures themselves to be done in consultation with the Art Committee and its staff. That's my motion.
I'd like to echo a member Bowthers, and also to second the motion with just the avid comment that I greatly appreciate. You know, the city, we see ourselves as a city of arts and culture. And quite frankly, without the community of artists that we have, we wouldn't be able to make that claim. So thank you. So we have a motion and a second. A member Pryforce.
So here's why you're my favorite. All right. And city manager, please don't get jealous. So last year, we had, I raised this conversation around equity in terms of the, you know, these are, these are grants. And it came up. And so you did two things. Well, one is that, and I'm sure that previous judging and applicants, you know, were diverse, but you really added that in terms of your scope of work, of putting data and numbers to that. And so I really, and that being a part of presentation. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. The other thing is that I remember there was an applicant last year who complained that even though there was diversity, the art itself wasn't diverse. And I think he used the term like corporate art. And what corporate art is, is that you can have a picture of a bird, but to interact with birds is scary. And so, and so I saw examples of art that wasn't corporate. And so, and that's why I join, I'd like to second the, well, no, third motion, whatever. I'd support the motion that's being carried right now as it relates to Packer Jennings' proposal. And it's unfortunate that we had to change our meeting policy sort of on the fly to protect, you know, to protect people. And so the ability for you to be able to provide, you know, feedback had to be curtailed. And so, yeah, so yeah, I'd like to just say thank you. And I think we're heading in the right direction. Yeah.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
Resolution is approved with the modifications proposed. Item 12.3 is the introduction and waiver of first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville repealing and amending a portion of Section 10 related to, this is the all-electric building requirement for new construction. Is there a staff report or, sorry, presentation on this?
There is not, Mr. Vice Mayor.
We all have the staff report and the draft ordinance. Are there any questions on this measure? Or this repeal? I'll now take a public comment. Seeing no questions, we'll take public comment on this item. Any members of the public will have two minutes to speak on this item. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring this back for a member comment or a motion.
I'll make a motion to, read by title only.
I'll second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mora. Reading by title only, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville repealing and amending a portion of Section 10 of Ordinance Number 22-013 related to all-electric building requirements for new construction, sequel determination exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines, Sections 15378 and 15061, subsection B, subsection 3. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowthers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
The ordinance is approved. Item 12.4, Tobacco Retailer License and Smoking Pollution Control Ordinances. Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Smalley. Is there a presentation?
There's a brief presentation if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Since we've seen this several times, is there support to waive presentation?
Motion to waive.
Okay, presentation is waived. I'd like to do 12.4.1 and 12.4.2 together. Do we have any, are there any questions about this item? A member Bowthers?
Yeah, I guess I'll start first with just as a point of order. Can two ordinances be done with one motion?
Yes, they could be called together if you would like, or they can be called separately.
Okay, so I support the council's decision to waive presentation. We've discussed this extensively at study sessions. I'm presenting tonight one brief amendment that I'd like the council to consider in regards to this. This is something that did not get fully discussed the last time that we were here, but it's been raised and was raised in comment by the stakeholders and the health advocates. And I wanted to make sure that we just did all the, tightened all the screws and nuts and bolts on this before we were done. So in Title V, Chapter 42, Section 11, the compliance monitoring section in the ordinance, the black language that I've presented here is the language that's already in the ordinance. This is just as it relates to the compliance check we did, which is that once every 12 months, there was discussion about if somebody failed it, what would we do to recheck it? And that hadn't been presented to us in the original draft. And so what I'm proposing is what a recheck would look like in subsection C. So for those at home, it reads, if the department determines that a tobacco retailer has not complied with the requirements of this chapter following a compliance check, a follow-up compliance check shall be conducted within 90 days. The cost of the follow-up compliance check shall be paid by the tobacco retailer within 30 days after the department has sent an invoice to the tobacco retailer requesting payment. So this ensures that somebody who's not in compliance is brought into compliance, and it also ensures that the city is not paying repeatedly for an unknown number of follow-ups because it will actually put the onus on the retailer to do it, which is another way of helping ensure we get better compliance because a retailer will not want to pay the compliance check follow-up. So we should not have violations after a first time of having this kind of experience. So with that amendment, obviously, we'll wait for the public comment, but that is the request I'm making. I would be happy to hear any questions if members have them.
Are there any questions on the proposed modification?
I'm in support of the proposed modification. I'm just concerned about if we've given, so we're talking about the retailers that we've not given them notice that this modification is happening. It just, it doesn't seem, yeah, in terms of the process, in terms of like, yeah, ordinances, you know, or modifications changing. So, yeah.
Member Bowthers, if you'd like to clarify.
Thank you, yeah. Because it is an ordinance, it requires us to vote at two consecutive meetings. So after we've voted for this, that's why we have that. If there is a change of this nature, it will get published in the second agenda. So anybody who wishes to object or come in and ask us to not approve it or raises some issue, we don't have to approve it a second reading, and we could reintroduce at a first reading, what would have otherwise been a second reading, a new version. In fact, our Smoking Pollution Control Ordinance in 2018 had such a situation where we had a provision that at second reading, we made a change to it, and we did it again as a new first reading. So there was a third meeting to approve it. So retailers would get this, get this notice to them in the agenda that would go out this week when we publish second reading.
As, member Pryforce, maybe before further discussion, I'd like to open for public comment, and then we can have more discussion. So we're now open for public comment. Members would have two minutes, or members of the public have two minutes to speak at the podium.
Good evening, and thank you to the city council for taking this item that's on the agenda. In a 2022 store survey for the city of Emeryville, 67% of the retailers carried electronic smoking devices, called vapes. Flavored tobacco products, excuse me, flavored tobacco promotes youth tobacco use. In a 2023 California Youth Tobacco Survey, most high school respondents who were surveyed to use tobacco reported they used flavors. Out of the tobacco products, flavors that they used, the highest were for vapes at 89%, and roughly 45% of those who responded also smoked cigarettes, and they used menthols. Specifically from these respondents, African-American students use the highest rates of flavored tobacco at 96%, followed by Asian respondents at 94% and other races at 91%. The above statistics support consideration for a ban on electronic devices to prevent the next generation of smokers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jen Grand Mahano with American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. Tobacco is a leading cause of cancer, so I want to thank you for considering a policy to reduce the impact of tobacco in Emeryville, especially one that aligns so closely with best practices, including Councilmember Bowthers' proposed recommendation to add store rechecks after violations are found. I also want to thank city staff, especially city attorney John Kennedy, for his time and attention receiving feedback from our coalition on this policy. And we look forward to the city setting a TRL fee that would be sufficient to cover the cost of the administration and enforcement of this promising policy. And I just want to applaud the strong compliance efforts that are codified in the policy and offer our technical assistance for implementation and compliance monitoring to staff and code enforcement. Thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I'm Liz Williams with Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights, and I'm here to voice our support for the tobacco retailer licensing amendments, but also the smoke-free air amendments. So as an organization that is focused on protecting everyone's right to breathe, smoke-free air, we strongly support those proposed smoke-free amendments, updating the definitions, including electronic smoking devices, that will make sure the city is following those best practices and helping keep your smoke-free spaces free from all types of secondhand smoke and vape. That's really important. Also, we're especially glad to see you consider removing the smoking lounge exemption. This has just been a pretty unnecessary loophole in our minds that could really risk the health of workers, of patrons in and around such establishments. Often, we know that they are often exploited, turned more into hospitality-style venues that allow indoor smoking, which we don't want to see, and also just weakens our smoke-free norms. So thank you for choosing to close that gap and strengthen those workplace protections. And again, we do also support the tobacco retailer licensing requirements. We'll keep you much more in alignment with the other communities within the county. So thank you for your leadership on both of these topics. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council. My name's Camille Cummings, and I'm a member of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council, and we advocate for the Black community and other communities of color who are often left out of life-saving public health legislation. And we really appreciate your commitment and hard work to moving this policy forward. I agree wholeheartedly with all of the previous speakers, so I will keep it brief. I do encourage you to continue to work towards protecting the health of all Emeryville residents by keeping the health of those residents at the forefront of your thought and not the profits of the tobacco industry. The adoption of the ordinance as is will interrupt the predatory marketing practice, predatory marketing tactics that the commercial tobacco companies use to disproportionately impact poor communities, marginalized groups, youth and communities of color. So thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Holfan. I'm the Executive Director of Eden Youth and Family Center, and I applaud the work and research that has been done on the tobacco retail licensing and the compliance. I was going to speak directly to compliance this evening, but I echo all of the comments that have already been made. I will say one thing, and that Eden Youth and Family Center's Youth Advisory Council, we have over 10 years of experience doing youth decoy operations, and so we'd be happy to support Emeryville in any way with any of the compliance efforts with our trained youth that have carried out these decoy operations.
Thank you.
Dear Vice Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Trinity Sines. I'm the Policy Coordinator at Eden Youth Center. I'm here to thank you for your leadership in adopting a strong and comprehensive TRL ordinance that aligned with best practice, as it prohibits the sale of all flavored tobacco and electronic smoking devices with no exceptions, ends tobacco sales in pharmacies, and prohibits new stores from selling tobacco within 500 feet of existing tobacco retailers and within 1,000 feet of youth-oriented facilities. In moving forward with this ordinance, please recognize the necessity for active and comprehensive compliance monitoring to ensure that the current and future youth of Emeryville are protected from the commercial tobacco industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brian Davis, a member of the Alameda County Tobacco Control Coalition and Project Director of LGBTQ minus tobacco. A 2022 store survey found that some tobacco products, such as cigareos and cigar wraps, are being sold in many Emeryville stores for less than $2. $1.49 for packs of two cigareos is a very common price, and prices are sometimes even lower than that. Over 100 studies have shown that increasing tobacco prices reduces the high-school-age youth smoking rate and increases the number of adults that quit. Cigareo-type cigars are the second-most popular tobacco product among underage youth in California after electronic cigarettes, and are often used by them to smoke cannabis, exposing them to two drugs that harm their growing bodies at the same time. Jurisdictions all over Alameda County, such as Allen, Oakland, Berkeley, Albany, Hayward, Pleasanton, and unincorporated county, are closing all the loopholes big tobacco uses to keep prices low by requiring minimum prices for cigars and cigarettes, minimum pack sizes for cigars, and not allowing tobacco coupons to be redeemed or tobacco to be purchased at a discount. The draft ordinance you are considering tonight contains all of these important components, including the current best practice of a minimum price of $10 for a pack of cigars or cigarettes or a single cigar. This is in line with the Surgeon General's 2014 recommendation of $10 for a pack of cigarettes. Although, Union City just raised the bar by adopting a $15 minimum price for a pack of cigars. There's that. Thank you for considering this information.
Thank you.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, council. My name is Rachel Gratz Lazarus, Senior Program Specialist with Alameda County Public Health Department's Tobacco Control Program. Our program provides information and education to cities throughout Alameda County considering tobacco control policies. While we do not lobby and cannot request any specific policy action, I did want to reiterate the type of resources our program could offer to support TRL implementation in Emeryville, should the city decide to move forward with this policy. This includes developing educational mailing materials on how retailers can comply with adopted TRL ordinance regulations, conducting in-person, one-on-one retailer education visits to clarify TRL requirements prior to the effective date, sharing sample TRL implementation materials, including TRL applications, inspection checklists, and TRL webpages from other cities, sharing resources to assist the city in setting an annual TRL fee to cover the cost of enforcement and implementation, and sharing product research on ambiguously labeled tobacco products found for sale in the city to support enforcement in making flavored tobacco product determinations, as tobacco companies use ambiguously labeled products to circumvent flavored tobacco laws. We're also happy to invite Emeryville to participate in quarterly Tobacco Retail Enforcement Network meetings, which support information sharing, best practices, and cross-jurisdictional partnerships with TRL enforcement officials across Alameda County and the Bay Area. And lastly, as mentioned, I wanted to highlight Eden Youth and Family Center, who trains youth decoys, who could partner with the city enforcement to assess whether retailers are selling tobacco to minors. I hope this information is helpful, and thank you so much for your leadership in discussing this important public health issue.
Thank you for your comment. Public comment is closed, and I'll bring this back to the members for comment. Yes.
To help move our meeting along, unless there's further discussion, I would be willing to make a motion to approve both the readings of the ordinances under 12.4.1 and 12.4.2. And under 12.4.1, I'd like to amend that ordinance on page 11, under Title V, Chapter 42.11, by adding subparagraph C under compliance monitoring, and to insert the language that I previously read into the record and provided a copy in hard print to the clerk. That's my motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll. Sorry, Member Pryforce.
Who was the person who was, who would have made the presentation? Would have been you, John? Okay. The, because you made the comment, thank you, by the way, about electronic devices without restrictions. The electronic devices without restrictions, does that also include cannabis or cannabis-like products?
Cannabis, electronic smoking devices that contain cannabis products are not considered to be electronic smoking devices and not prohibited under the smoking pollution control or the tobacco retail license requirements.
Okay, so then everything related to what we were talking about in terms of the flavored products, and none of that touches cannabis?
I'm not an expert on cannabis and cannabis products, but I don't believe that it does.
Okay, okay. I just wanted that clarification.
Member Bowers?
Just so, to answer Councilmember Pryforce's question, the way we structured these two ordinances, the smoking pollution control and the tobacco retailer license, they're only touching tobacco and all of tobacco because we have a separate ordinance on cannabis, which is regulated differently and under state law differently. So all the restrictions under cannabis are in that ordinance for easy enforcement, and these only apply, the electronic smoking devices only apply to any product that would contain tobacco, flavored, unflavored, or otherwise. All of those apply to tobacco.
Member Pryforce?
Thank you for that. That I understood. I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that, because part of my job is direct interactions with the public. And so, for example, when I ask about the retailers, if the retailers approach me, I will say, well, I'm for this ordinance. But then if they say, well, we weren't informed, or that sort of thing, and then I can go, well, no, there was a first read and there was a second read, from how I understood it, from how we did it, you know, based upon your clarification. So before there's a second read, if I'm engaged by the retailers, I'll tell them what there's going to be a second read and that, but I'm just going to let you, you know, that's, I'm for this ordinance. And then when it comes to cannabis, a lot of families have approached me about cannabis products and whether or not any of this affects them. And so I just want to make sure that that is made clear to those families. And whether or not we visit those cannabis ordinances, I just wanted to make it clear that it does not affect those, it does not affect cannabis and cannabis-related products, which also flavored, you know, electronic may also be targeting young people, youth, and especially youth of color. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarifications. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Mayor Welch is absent.
Thank you. Reading by title only, the first ordinance, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, adding Chapter 42 tobacco retail licensing requirements to Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code, and authorizing the city manager to take actions related to implementation and enforcement, sequel determination exempt pursuant to guideline section 15378 and 15061, subsection B, subsection 3." And the second ordinance, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, amending Sections 5-29.02 and 5-29.09 of Chapter 29, Smoking Pollution Control of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code, to add and revise the definitions for certain terms and repeal the exception for private smokers' lounges, and authorizing the city manager to take actions related to implementation and enforcement, sequel determination exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines 15378 and 15061, subsection B, subsection 3." Thank you.
Do we have a motion to second and adopt the first reading of the two ordinances?
You just did the first reading.
Apologies.
My motion, I'll make a motion to approve both ordinances and amend page 11 of the first ordinance in Title V, Chapter 42, subsection point 11, adding subparagraph C as provided in the record and provided to staff.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch is absent.
The ordinances are approved. Moving on to item 12.5, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, Amending the Budget for Fiscal Year 2024." Director Cho.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and member of the council. This evening, I'm presenting the fiscal year 2024 mid-year budget review. Next slide, please. The agenda inquiry and overview offered that I'll present the general fund revenue expenditure and also the project general fund and aside fund balance. Next slide, please. The City Council approved the fiscal year 2024 budget in June last year and mid-year. Department review revenue received and expenditure incurred during the first half of the fiscal year, and determining if budget adjustment are needed. The Budget and Governance Committee and Budget Advisory Committee reviewed the budget in March and recommend the amended budget for council consideration and approval. Next slide, please. We will first look at the general fund revenue. I'll walk you through this chart very slowly. We first look at the general fund revenue test and fee. I'll present the departmental revenue in the next slide. This table shows the historical trend and performance of the general fund revenue between fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2025. On the left-hand side of the table, you see a green line. Fiscal year 2019 represent the general fund revenue before the pandemic. Fiscal year 20 through 2024 represent the revenue during the pandemic and post-pandemic. In addition, there are two columns highlighted in green. The first column is the fiscal year 2024 adopt budget. The next column highlighted in red is the proposed adjustment. And the next column highlighted in green is the amended budget after the adjustment. I will highlight some of the major changes to the current fiscal year. As you are aware, the Federal Reserve Bank increased the interest rate 11 times since March 2022, making borrowing more expensive, in an attempt to cool off the economy and control inflation. And high interest rate really affect the consumer spending, real estate transaction, and development activities in Emeryville. Sales revenue is projected to decrease by $970,000 due to high interest rate. The same as business license test is projected to decrease by approximately $300,000. Residential and commercial real property transfer tests are projected to decrease by 1.6 million due to high mortgage rate. On the positive side, high interest rate means $500,000 increase in investment returned. The utility user test is projected to increase by 1 million, which is mainly due to BG&E rate hike in both electric and gas rate. We also projected moderate increase in hotel tests as travel activities rebound. In summary, general fund revenue test and fee are projected to decrease by $600,000. Next slide, please. This table shows the general fund revenue, departmental fees and charges. Building revenue related to MU Station 5 and public market project are projected to decrease by over 3 million, as both projects will not put building permit in the current fiscal year. In addition, building permit, fire plancha fee and inspection fee related to the biomet project are projected to decrease by around 1 million. In summary, total general fund revenue include test and fee and departmental fees and charge are projected to decrease by 4.6 million, which is the very line that's shown in the table. Next slide, please. This table combined the two slides that I showed about, the first part of the table is the general fund test and fee, and the bottom is the departmental fee and charges. As you can see, the column highlighted in red, the total general fund revenue decreased by 4.6 million. Okay, next slide, please. Now, we look at the general fund expenditure. The table showed the general fund expenditure between fiscal year 2019 and 2025. The column highlighted in red is the proposed adjustment for the current fiscal year. Fire expenditure are projected to decrease by around $280,000, as the city will receive credit from Alameda County Fire Service Department for a weakened deputy fire marshal position. Non-departmental expenditure are projected to increase by 2.6 million. I would like to point out that the increase is mainly due to 2.2 million payment to IRS closing agreement and $300,000 increase in professional services. Police department are projected to increase by around $600,000 over the budget, as they are fully staffed and the additional costs are related to the new MOU implementation. Public works are projected to be $250,000 over the budget due to increasing professional service and utility costs. In summary, total general fund expenditure are projected to increase by 3 million. After the one-type expenditure, 2.2 million related to the IRS closing agreement, and $800,000 related to the MOU implementation, the net general fund expenditure- the net general fund expenditure increased by only sixty-seven thousand dollar. And overall, the year-to-date expenditure are in line with the approved budget. Next slide, please. Now, we look at the projected general fund and assigned fund balance. At the beginning of the fiscal year, the assigned fund balance is twenty-two million. After deduct three point nine million one-time transfer authorized by the council at the beginning of the fiscal year and two point two million for the IRS closing agreement and, excuse me, and hundred thousand dollar for the MOU, the assigned fund balance reduced to fifteen million. In the current fiscal year, we use four point six million to balance the budget. It's mainly due to rafting shortfall. The assigned funds were further reduced to ten million. Currently, we anticipate that will be a one point eight million savings from weakened position. So the projected assigned fund balance at the end of the current fiscal year is approximately twelve million. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, high interest rate really impact the local economy and especially the development activity and the general fund revenue. And currently, we balance the budget using the assigned fund balance, which is unsustainable over the long term. For the fiscal year 2025 budget, it will continue to be a challenge at the city explore options to maintain essential services. Staff will develop a strategies to balance the budget and will bring the FY 2025 budget back to the council for consideration in four this year. And staff recommend that the city council approve the resolution amending the current fiscal year 2024 budget. And this conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you, Lawrence. Do we have any questions? I'll, let's open for public comment. I see no members of the public here. So let's do, we'll do member comment and discussion. Member Bowers.
Thank you. Thank you, Lawrence, for the presentation. I know budgets are not everyone's favorite thing. They're sometimes everyone's least favorite thing to talk about or work on, but this is a really critical budget for a couple reasons. It identifies, as Lawrence pointed out, a few things that I just want the community to be mindful of and aware of as we move into the second year of our two-year cycle. One, the combination of interest rates and inflation and other impacts in the global and national economies have dramatically impacted development and the work that we do, especially in community development and economic development. And that has a consequence on the revenue side of what we're doing. And so with that comes a need to evaluate very carefully what the scope of services is going to be for the city. And we have in this revised amended budget for fiscal year 24, I think reasonable and prudent changes that are being proposed for taking money from the general funds unassigned fund and allocating them to cover those. But as Lawrence noted on the last slide in the second bullet, that's not a long-term sustainable plan for how to balance the finances of the city. And so we're fortunate to have that money available to us, but this is going to require us all to look very carefully. We've had several things come up that were unexpected in the past couple of years that have been one-time challenges to the city's bottom line, fiscally, one-time expenditures that we've needed to make. And we've made those and weathered those things. But as we've learned from the recession a number of years ago and from COVID, there's a lot of things that are unpredictable that can happen. And as that cushion in the unassigned fund is depleted, it is making it more imperative for the city to be really on top of how it disposes of and invests in the services and the people who work here to ensure that we can continue great community services, but be mindful of the fact that we need to do the things that help us generate revenue to cover those services. So I just want to thank Lawrence for the presentation and everybody in the Finance Department. And pending further discussion, I'm happy to make a motion to amend the budget for fiscal year 24.
Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Lawrence. Yes. It is unfortunate that what we're experiencing, many cities, including our neighbors, are experiencing budget shortfalls for many of the same reasons, but also some reasons unique to Emeryville, that we've had, you've had the same leadership for, you know, going on ten years. And, you know, I believe that, that in this time, as we're having conversations around how Emeryville provides services to, to the public in terms of shrinking, that we also start thinking about growth. Growth in ways that allow us to build our revenue sources and so that no matter the unpredictable factors that can happen, that can affect a city's budget, that we are, that we are placed, that we are in a better position to weather those fluctuations. And so, and so that's my hope for the future of Emeryville, that we grow rather than shrink. Thank you.
So I think we have a motion and I'm.
I made a motion.
Member Bowers made the motion. And second by Carr. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Mayor Welch is absent.
Thank you. The motion is approved. The resolution is approved. Thank you, Lawrence. Item thirteen, department head reports.
No department head reports, Vice Mayor.
Item fourteen, future agenda items requests from council members. Do we have any future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
So in March 2022, the city of San Francisco passed an ordinance that was able to support and reinforce a tenant's right to organize. And that tenant's right to organize legislation has allowed the creation of tenant unions in environments, residential environments that were hostile towards them. And so as the head of a tenant board, I have seen that the ability for tenants to organize be suppressed and for fear retaliation. And so I'd like to place on the future agenda item an exploration of adopting a similar ordinance for the city of Emeryville, a tenant's right to organize.
Is there support for adding the proposed future agenda item?
Can I ask a clarifying question of either the proponent or the city attorney?
Yes.
To either of you, is there not a right to do that already? Can a tenant organize now?
I'm just not aware of the ordinance in question. I haven't reviewed the ordinance. It would seem that they have a right to form groups, but I don't know what the city of San Francisco did with that ordinance or why it was enacted.
I'll ask the proponent, like, what, what rights does a person not have right now?
Sure. So, so many landlords, particularly corporate landlords, have embedded into their leases activities that they discourage, the ability for tenants to meet and gather within common spaces, the ability for tenants to, to be able to communicate through literature, any flyers, or to communicate to the tenant, to the landlord, that a tenant meeting is, is about to occur. And so some of these activities, and I'm just using this as an example, are discouraged and many tenant, many landlords can threaten tenants with evictions as a result. And that's one of the reasons why the city of San Francisco created that legislation. If you're doing research on it, it was in March 2022.
Is there support for adding this to a future agenda item? There's no support. The proposal fails. Any other future agenda item proposals?
Can I make an ask, though? Can I ask?
Yes.
A request? I just don't know anything about this because what I heard is not consistent with the law. People can have the right to assemble. People have the right to speak. It's all First Amendment protected, but doesn't mean it's, there's not an issue there that I'm not familiar with. So if Member Pryforce would like to work with the city attorney and provide us like a brief memo as to what the ordinance does, because I'm not familiar with it, I would be happy to reconsider it at a future time.
Member Pryforce.
Yes, I can, I can provide a copy of the legislation, a memo of the legislation, and I'll also provide a copy of my lease as an example of tactics that corporate landlords use to repress landlords. And of course, because we don't have a rent registry, we don't have as many copies as we should to make a comparison between leases of, particularly with corporate landlords across the city to see if similar language is being used. But I would suggest looking at some of the landlords that up till recently are being, in Emeryville, that are being investigated by the Department of Justice for rent gouging through AI apps like RealPage. And so I think we should start there, taking a look at those leases.
So maybe with a show of hands, do we have support to have? Mr. Kennedy, you'll connect with Member Pryforce to get the background on this issue?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
I'd like to place on a future agenda item a study as to the return of the Pledge of Allegiance to our proceedings, which I will demonstrate.
Maybe before you do, could I propose one?
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I think we were, we were struggling with the subcommittee composition for the community grants, so I think it would be useful to revisit that in the future to have just a better discussion on the composition of that committee. Is there support? Thank you. A Member Pryforce, please proceed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You're doing a great job today. So the Pledge of Allegiance, I ask that it be placed into the future agenda item, which I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is there support for adding the Pledge of Allegiance? I don't see support, so the item won't be added, and this meeting is adjourned. The time is nine thirty-eight, and we are, we need to resume our closed session.
Sorry.
The time is...
Recording in progress.
The time is 10:16. We're reporting out from a closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mora. For item number 9.2.1, the claim of Joseph Griffin on a motion made by Councilmember Botters, which was seconded by Councilmember Carr with Mayor Welch absent, the City Council voted four to zero to deny the claim of Joseph Griffin for towing and impound fees and costs for his towed vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. The time is 10:16. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.